All right.
So, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Dover Select Board Reorganizational Meeting for Wednesday, March fifth, two thousand and twenty-five. To order at six thirty P M. First on the agenda is to welcome newly elected and reelected select board members. So, Becky and Joe were reelected to their respective two and three-year positions. And Patrick Lebronge is our newly elected board member to fill the remainder of Scott's always term. So, congratulations. And welcome, Patrick. And now, the first thing we want to do is select board chair appointment. So, if I could entertain a motion or discussion about an appointment of the chair.
I nominate Vicky Cavatani.
Is there any discussion with? Becky, how do you feel about that?
You've got to do much more job if he wants to know.
Okay, I'm on that. Do you want to be chairman? Well, actually, Patrick had the most votes. He got ninety-one. Okay, so a motion by Sarah, second bid by Dan. All in favor? Okay, then I will turn my meeting over to you. Next, third on the agenda, select board vice chair. Appointment, appointment. And do I have any motions for a vice chair?
Yeah. Let the membership be as much as.
Anybody else? All in favor? Select Board Board Meeting Rules and Procedures. That's this document. Everybody have a chance to look it up. It was in the email. It basically tells you your responsibilities and and procedures to do should follow if you have, if you can, if you possibly. Obviously, we all have other things that we do, but these are, it's a good. So, we have to vote and all sign the back of this form. Somebody want to make a motion that we sign?
So, I make a motion that the board signs the Dover Select Board Meeting Rules and Procedure document.
I'll sign it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, sorry, Jim.
Is Patrick got to be sworn in?
He was last night, as Joe and I were as well.
He was up counting votes.
So, but yeah, he was. Andy did the whole bunch of people. Rich and Marco and yeah.
Andy and Andy.
And Andy. And he swore in Jeanette as Assistant Town Clerk this morning too, when I was in the office. Rules and procedures have not changed. There's another one of the next one, Jake. Look at that. The next one is the Select Board Duties and Guidelines. And this one has some things that we haven't been doing in taking attendance at meetings, and I need to have data to put in the town report. And I don't feel that I can really take attendance.
I'm fine. If I'm not there, I'll just read the minutes and what if I'm there.
Right? Those are two. I mean, I feel it.
I feel like we've put a lot on the plate, mind.
I mean, I mean, we could just do a grid and have that.
Check mark.
Yes, yes. I think that's what I did when we were first discussing this policy.
Okay, I just, I just didn't want to assume that yet again, we could expect you to take care of things.
And this was at Jim's request years ago. Do you remember that, Jim? He wanted us to take a chance and have it published in the town report.
No.
Attendant of the board.
It wasn't? I thought it was, but whatever. It's in here. We didn't, we did amend. And the other thing is, it's really a courtesy, more than a courtesy, I think, that the board members review all materials supplied prior to the meeting at which they are to be discussed. Yes. All right, so does somebody want to make a motion?
I make a motion that the board signs the town of select, the Dover Select Board Duties and Guidelines document.
Any discussion? Oh, this was the original or what? Okay. And you guys have already signed it and we haven't voted yet, okay? Okay. All in favor? Aye. Okay. Next is the meeting schedule. We currently meet the first and third Tuesdays of every month at six thirty P M. Is there any need to change any of that?
Did we want to include here consideration for any one meeting month in the summer? Do we want to just address that when we get to May?
Think possible to try to, if we don't need to have two meetings a month, we should try to, at least during the summer months, go to just one if we can.
Right. I'm not disagreeing with that point. My question is, do we address it right now or do we just wait until May?
I think we have to see what's on our schedule.
Okay.
I think that it's, it's there may be a little bit of words, no big deal, but there may be, we may be involved in something very different, so we don't.
Okay, all right.
All right, so just.
I make a motion that we, the select board meets the first and third Tuesdays at six thirty P M.
Any discussion?
You have to say in person.
No, that's assumed.
Okay.
Okay, and so at this point, I'm going to recuse myself.
I gotta go sit. We gotta vote on that.
Oh, I thought we just said. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm gonna, you said something, go sit and not be involved in the conversation.
So, the reason that he's leaving is the next item is the selection of our local newspaper, which is the Deerfield Valley News. So, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we select the Deerfield Valley News as the official newspaper of the town of Dover.
You have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, Becky.
All right. Next are the town attorneys, Katie and Dugan, and the newly minted S P F attorneys, right?
They changed their, they officially changed their name to S P and F, hyper-.
And F.
F attorneys. Which is easier to stay, save in the Sticks on Page.
So, did you make that?
I didn't. I moved that we name Katie and Dugan and S P and F attorneys as the town official, or the town attorneys.
Second. Any discussion?
Just a question. So, what are the two different roles? I'm familiar with what S P and F does.
Like if we have a dog problem or some, some ordinances are pretty easy and Katie and Dugan's less expensive.
Yeah.
So, it's, it's more of a, you know, just some local, some small ordinances and, and we've definitely dealt with dogs with them and we've had multiple dog situations.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
And so now they're up just to those things.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, town officer appointments. And Jeanette, do you know if there's anybody who doesn't want to do this? Um, I, the only question Becky Arbella reached out to me. She's not here technically, but she will be back to her and she can still, she still works for, you know, council on aging. She was gonna try to find another representative, you know, in the meantime, but she has not yet. So, she can she'd be happy to remain on until if another person is needed, she can recommend that.
And we don't have any requirement with the resident.
No, I mean. No, I don't think so. No. And that's it? That's it. Everything else, as long as Dan and Sarah want to continue with the Wyndham Solid Waste and Wyndham Regional. You good with that, the Wyndham Solid, Wyndham Regional? Okay. Do you want to just read that? Make a motion, Sarah?
I make a motion that we appoint the following as town officers. Assessor Linda Sherman, Civil Defense Officer of the Select Board. Conservation Commission Chris Katie, Council on Aging Representative Becky Arbella, Energy Coordinator Joe Mahon, Exposure Control Officer Richard Warner, Greed update Coordinator Lori O'Hern, Animal Control Officers Megan Odette and Richard Sedlag, Road Commissioner Travis Graves, Town Service Officer Linda Holland, Town Agent Linda Holland, Tree Warden Andy McLean, Westover Fire Chief Richard Warner, Wyndham Solid Waste Representatives Dan Belliotti and Kevin Stein, and Wyndham Regional Commissioner Sarah Shippey and Kevin Stein.
Any discussion? There are none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Then we have appoint Department Committee, Board, and Commission Liaisons. So, this is where we sometimes discuss changing. Anybody have any ideas? How can you say like what I have? So, Patrick, what, Scott had was the library.
Right.
Oh, sorry. Scott had the assessments office.
I probably think so sometime. I don't, I don't have any experience with either one of those things.
Well, the school board liaison is not as the same as it used to be because now that we're in a bigger, you know, district and who knows where we're going in the future, right?
Right.
But how about you, Dan? Are you good with what you've got?
Yeah.
Joe?
Yeah.
So, the assessor will be a bit, a big one because we're heading into the rephrase.
Is that this year a big one or next year a big one?
It's just an ongoing.
Yeah.
So, I just, I'm just warning you on that.
I would assume Scott would be happy to talk to me.
I'm sure, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, Linda.
Um, Patrick, if you want to schedule a time to meet and I can just give you the, the lowdown, that might be a good idea.
Okay, yeah, that'll be an idea. I'll do that.
After you get back.
Yeah.
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 Okay, so, everybody good? Nobody wants to go to eight o'clock by town meeting in the morning before I have to go to? What day of the week is it? Thursday at eight?
Ah, sorry.
Okay. You want to make a motion on that?
I make a motion that we appoint Department Committee, Board, and Commission Liaisons. Administration Joe Mahon, Assessor Patrick LaGrange, Bytown Committee Vicky Cavatani, Development Review Board Dan Belliotti, Economic Development Vicky Cavatani, Fire Department Sarah Shippey, Highway Department Dan Belliotti, Library Joe Mahon, Planning Commission Sarah Shippey, Police Department Sarah Shippey, School Board Liaison Patrick LaGrange, and zoning office Chair Mahon.
Second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that's the end of the reorganizational meeting. We're gonna move into the regular meeting. I'm gonna need an executive session for personnel at the end of the meeting. Public comments. Jeanette? Can I just make it simple? Actually, it's more of a question on the agenda. We had, as far as liquor control goes, and I don't know if you want me to bring it up when we get to there, but we've had several special event permits come in after the fact for an event at Mount Snow, which is taking place on the fifteenth of March. So, you won't meet again until the eighteenth after the event is done. So, I'm not sure it's kind of not really clear what the event is. It doesn't really tell us. But there's been three applications for special event permits, and I believe Andy and I were talking that at one point you had given us permission to authorize those because they do sometimes come in after, you know, agendas have gone out. So, if that's okay with you, we can go ahead and do that.
Subject that you mean is one is you run it by Mike and he doesn't have any objections. I think that's.
Any other comments on that?
No, you're not. You haven't seen it yet.
You're scarred. Do you have any idea what event? Well, March fifteenth.
Um, since Patrick says something.
The same, it says Monday. Yeah, it doesn't, it's. I, I think we can find, we can handle it when we get to the Board of Liquor Control. We were hoping to get some sort of map folks or from Mount Snow, if that's the case, but. And then.
You can expect to find a specialty food day event as part of a ski Vermont tour where local food and beverage vendors will set up the base of mountain showcasing unique products from the region.
Right, but unfortunately, all of these were submitted March third, which takes very little time to get them approved. We'll, we'll, I know Mike's doing a little research. Let's, let's, let's just do it in.
He's texting us.
So, that's the Board of Liquor Control anyway. Yes. And also, the unfinished business authorized, the DeFray Group contract is not available tonight, correct?
That's correct.
We're gonna pass that to the next meeting.
Right, but I, I did want to ask if the members of the select board did want to take a look at it at their, you know, soon to see if they had any comments. They could do that and then Mike could circulate those comments back.
Yes.
I think Jeanette, you passed it.
I saw it coming. Okay, so that's out for tonight and we'll, okay. So, we're on the new, the highway department revisit proposed new transfer station fees. And I passed around everybody the fees of, Jim, did you also give Travis's schedule of the Wilmington fees? Thank you.
I'm sorry, Travis, sir, you have, yeah.
Oh, we did. Good, thank you. So, these are the new proposed fees. I have two copies of it I do believe. Well, it's somewhere down here. Everybody have a chance to look at it?
The proposed fees are the ones supposed to.
The higher.
The current fee is the one listed all the way to the right. That's what we are currently charging. I forgot to list in here on the tires with rims, it would be five dollars more on the price.
On all tires?
Yeah. It, nothing's set in stone. If you, if you think you want to up this or, or lower, I mean, definitely, I'm open to it. Speak up, please, like any, any. An invoice. I'm, I'm okay.
Okay.
You know.
Dan?
Is there anything to size the mattresses? I had him over ten mattresses.
So, no, mattress thicker. Because that was charging us just per mattress and it's fifty dollars a mattress. We didn't, Jeanette and I looked on their list. It's fifty dollars mattress and box spring.
And so, it's a hundred dollars if you have both?
Yeah. Yeah.
This should say.
It's on, it's on the bill.
This should say box spring too.
So, we lost that last.
No, there's only usually two maybe.
So, it just, it just should say.
A lot of the times the box springs are out of wood. Fortunately, I think when we pack the dumpster with the backhoe, I think those are enough so they don't, they might, they might not get counted, but they're there's, there's obviously probably something to do, you know?
So.
Okay, wait, wait. Yes, Joe?
So, do we have a way to, like, on the the iPad, have it as a mattress so we can?
Yeah. It's on there, yeah.
Yep.
You can always add two box spring sized matches, do whatever. Yeah, you can get.
Make sure we're not getting overcharged, undercharged.
Sarah?
Yeah, I think we should separate line item for box spring because I don't want this, I'm gonna assume it's both together and then we get charged for it. And I think another thing that I was gonna bring up is, we also talked about changing the the sticker year to July first to June thirtieth, which means we've got a few, according to Andy, maybe a few hundred stickers out there already that were bought for this year that expect to be covered through December of this year. So, Travis and Andy and I had a conversation at town meeting and discussed the idea of basically just telling anybody who got their sticker in January, if they come in in July, they'll get a new sticker and they just pay the difference.
Pro rated.
Right, well, not even pro rated, but like, right now, they bought a sticker for ten dollars, right? But in July first, it's gonna be a twenty dollar sticker.
Yeah.
So, if they come in and pay ten dollars, they basically get six months for free.
Or you can, or like I talked with Joe, you, or you could just say, hey, whether you bought a sticker or not.
You start buying.
You start at July first and that's, that's it.
You start.
That's that. Or, or you wait a year and you'll say, okay, this, or you wait another year and the stickers that they have now are good until July of next year.
Right.
So, however you guys want to. Jim, want to do this? Many stickers to sell.
That's quite a few.
Hundreds and hundreds.
Hundreds and hundreds.
Hundreds. Whoa, 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 we're a lot past that, Jim. Oh, sorry.
Six or seven hundred.
Yeah.
So, just to make this easiest moving forward because we're changing the rates in the dump permit. That the dump permit from now is gonna start July first. We'll be selling our new dump permits as of this July first, that is gonna go to July first of
June thirty.
June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-five, so you can, so you can decide to buy your, if you already have your dump permit, you can decide to buy it in December if you'd like, but it's only gonna be good for six months. If you'd like to buy it early, you can just buy it earlier and it's good until July. Yes, we, well, some people have paid a little bit more that have always gone to the dump, yes, but this is just a way to catch up on loss fees and money that we've been losing over the last six months as a, trying to backdate things. It just gets more confusing as worth. I was saying that we start April first and anyone that wants to buy their dump permit after April first, it's basically you're buying it for the next year starting July first, just so. So, anyone buying anyone's gonna just make it easier. So, instead of trying to do us backdating and pay you only ten dollars, it's just, and it's, it's gonna be easier for our dump individual, so you jump permits and not have any of this thing. It's just, it's just that we're changing the, the operational time of the dump and it's, you know, a very small extra fee that people are paying. I don't, I don't think it should be a should be as confusing as we're trying to make it.
Sarah?
So, are we saying then that a bunch of people already bought their stickers? And they expect to be covered through December? Are we now saying that those stickers are gonna be good through July? So, they're basically.
They're good until December and then they can look at buying their next dump sticker is only gonna be good until June thirtieth. Because we're going on to a yearly basis that changes. It's just the way it works.
I just feel like that's gonna create a lot more.
I don't, I think you're.
Okay, you guys need me done because now Travis is gonna stand up and I'm actually gonna call on people who get their hand up. Thank you, Travis.
It's tough. There's gonna be some overlap, no matter how you, no matter how you do this, whether you pro rate whether you honor the, the current passes out there until December and then make them buy the, in December, they have to buy the the one for July, which is only gonna be good for six months, but, or whether you just say, hey, sorry, you, you bought this ticket in December. You then now have to buy another one in July, but however it's good till July twenty-sixth. It's half of one or the other, there's gonna be some overlap. It's gonna be tough.
Jeanette, as somebody who sells them, as you tell us. Yeah, I can see so much confusion right now in my head. I mean, people who have bought them already are expecting that they are good for a calendar year.
They are.
So, okay, so you.
So, they're good until this calendar year.
Changing.
And the next dump permit they purchase, whenever they purchase it, the next one's all gonna be good until June thirtieth. They're gonna be paying a little bit of extra. Yes, it is what it is, is what I'm trying to say. So, the only thing that's gonna overlap is the dump permit right now is good until December thirtieth. The whole conceptual thought process is because it's so difficult to sell the dump permits at the first year is that you could sell, people could purchase them in November, but if they don't have to do it, you know, the people that go there regularly or whatever, trying to get away from that, September thirtieth. So, it's, you know, it's just the way we're changing the structure of it. You know, it's gonna be an extra, maybe seven, eight dollars or ten dollars more because the dump permit was cheaper. It's not a lot of money, so. Stay in any other way.
Well, and a lot of the people who listen to us, they're seniors, and so the seniors, their rate isn't changing. Right? So, it's not a big deal. Yeah, no, a lot, and those are the people who are gonna complain a lot. Right, so I think that that kind of insulates them from that.
The other thing too that I brought up with Travis too is that everybody needs a permit. If you're, only reason why you wouldn't need a permit to go to the dump is if you're dropping off electronics. That's, we, that's a state thing that we have to allow anyone to drop off for TVs. Anyone that's just using it recycling, they need to have a permit. We're getting charged for recycling. So, if you're gonna utilize our transfer station, there has to be a permit for every user. And that's the other thing that I don't know if we've been doing or not been doing that Travis was going to.
Well, we, we can make sure that, that's something that you, like.
Even though we take it for free, it's costing the town money, so everyone should have a permit that is bringing stuff to the dump. There's a cost and a usage for the dump.
There's a lot of britches that come in here with their Airbnbs or whatever that probably utilize that dump. Do not have a dump sticker because it only here one week a year, one weekend.
Do not have a dump sticker, it isn't only here, one week a year, one weekend or whatever. I, what, I think how Wilmington handles that, is when you show up without a dump sticker. There's a five dollar surcharge on that bag, which might be an easier way to handle that.
I thought we had a.
We do have a.
A surcharge on people who don't have.
Sticker, divers.
Yes, isn't it five, isn't it like five dollars a bag?
It's a double C, I think, for the, like, trash bag or extra bag.
Yeah, I think it's doubled.
It's doubled.
Yeah.
The, the rate's doubled for no sticker.
Hold on, Jim, Sarah. Um, I understand, I hear what you're saying, I'm wondering how many Airbnb residents actually handle their own garbage? Or they expect the person they're renting from to be the one who deals with that, who either does it themselves or has property manager? I, I've stayed at a few Airbnbs, I never took out my own trash.
Uh, I know I take trash out for Airbnbs, so the Airbnbs don't, people don't trash, that's not to say that the owner of that Airbnb. Isn't taking care of the trash and bringing it to the dump.
Right. Jim.
The downside of turning them away, if they don't have a dump sticker, is you're gonna find them on the roadside. And which again becomes trash is problem.
Sarah.
But I think what we're saying is not to turn them away, just charge them double.
That's what we.
They would charge, they would, they would be able to double. Yeah, but it wasn't, there, yeah, and that's what Travis just said, it's, it is already in place and it's double. Whatever the bad charge.
But that needs to be.
Yeah.
On which opposed.
Right, yeah.
It already is on.
So please.
It would remain on.
Mm-hmm.
The only updates would be to these.
Okay.
It's, it's not, it's not, I'm, I'm not saying that this is gonna be. The sole new rest, this, these are the items that we should go up on and, but all others will remain the same.
Other comments? Okay. So the rates, we're gonna add rims are five dollars each, a- and additional on the tires, and we're gonna add. Box springs are also gonna be.
Treat like a mattress.
Yep, and we're gonna, yes?
I would, I'd also like to add, um, to the tires. Like, if somebody brings in a large loader tire or something very big, like. Construction sized tire. That, uh, I'd like it to be listed in there that those are a hundred dollars a tire.
Yeah, Wilmington has their front backhoe at a hundred and ten.
Yeah. Yeah.
Sarah.
Is there a size definition that you use, or you just say commercial vehicle tire?
Well, commercial vehicle would be the, the large trucker that we have twenty or, I have listed as large trucker tractor.
So do we just say extra large, or, or exceeds a certain, is there a size point where you say after this, it's a hundred?
Well, they, in, in Wilmington, they have tires larger than a hundred, uh, one thousand one hundred. By twenty-two, Paul Wyndham Solidated Waste for pricing and the phone number of Wyndham Solid Waste.
And their, their rates, a hundred, piece tire bearing is a hundred for disposal for. Hundred, hundred and ten, around there, to, to dispose of that large loader tire. Yeah.
Okay.
So the tire size that, uh. Sarah's referring to is, is the large truck tires that I have this here. Eleven, twenty-five. That would be the commercial truck tire.
Right, so this is like.
Big, like, well, I have them probably, with a grader. The back of the.
Like something you need a CBL license to drive?
It could even be the, it could even be the roadside mower, the rear tires for that, you know, big.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering if we need to have a definition of it, so that he doesn't have arguments for people when they get there.
Okay. So enough, we're quite ready to put this together, we need to see a real schedule and. Um, did you do this yourself Travis?
Yeah.
Um, maybe Jeanette can help you with formatting a little bit, or, or somebody else, uh, just because it, and make it. This is very clear, very easy to win, um, it is two sides, but, um. It is, uh, it's very clear, and there's a lot of information, yes.
Can I get a copy of that?
You may have that.
Oh, yeah.
I have a copy. So, Marco.
Yeah, I can, I can help Travis with, I can set up a spreadsheet, because I'm gonna end up. Getting that anyway.
Perfect, thank you, thank you.
So, yeah, um. So yeah, we can get a good fresh sheet and maybe something. Written up that, you know, going forward, if we make the date as of April first, which makes sense. Does that make sense for everyone, April first?
And we start selling the new, new permits?
We start selling the new permits, it just happens that the people that are buying them after April first are actually gonna be the one benefiting, but they're paying twenty dollars instead of ten dollars. But they're gonna get to go to the gym. So, people that purchased over the last three or four months are gonna end up paying an extra ten dollars. For a year, but they're really, it's, it, you know, it's very, a little bit of amount of money, he's talking seven or eight dollars.
So procrastination wins.
Uh, progress, yes, in this situation, so if we can have it written up, you know what I'm saying on that, so.
No, I'm totally confused.
So. We're raising, we're raising the rates as of April first.
Right.
But because we're doing it April, because we're saying, because we're selling them as of April first, starting the new. Rates and a new dump pass permit, when we sell the April one, it's gonna be good until June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-six.
Oh, okay.
Okay, it's only, we're gonna sell it twenty dollars and then have to buy it against.
Well, that's not riskable.
And then.
So you're getting three months for free, basically.
So people can buy their. New dump permit, they want, even if they have this years to the end. Now, and it's bought and paid for, but with that said, you know, I just wanna make sure we have dump permits, the other thing too is. I really, really, really think that our dump permits should only be sold at the dump, we should have that. And I know you're okay with it, I know Andy's okay with it. This is the reason why I've been trying to do this, so it's an easier process, it's not during the busy time. And can could be more proactive or whatever is at the dump to sell the permits. Not at, in the summer times easier, they're just purchasing them when they're coming in, so it's not as. Crunch time, that's all I've ever heard, it's always hard at Christmas.
Jeanette, I know you have some things to say.
You know, and, and that's a great idea, but I think either, um. Our transfer station attendant. Might need some more instruction on that, because inevitably, we are getting people that come in. To get their passes and they have no idea that they can get it at the transfer station.
Correct.
Or they've been told that they need to come to the office to get it, so.
We need to do better.
So.
And I think in the April, particularly April to end of June. I think it would be fine. Because this is gonna take time up at the, up at the transfer station, and that, if they come in and it's explained by Jeanette or Andy. Um, I think that that, the education pays things a bit, but we can have the goal of selling them just at the dump, at the transfer station, starting July first.
But it, there really is, you know, we don't really sell many dump permits from April to whatever years, like you're gonna start selling them, get them in summer, when you have your summer people coming. Just that we're not gonna sell. You know, I'm saying, don't sell something to someone in there, you know, that, that'll make them.
But let's get the rates and the, the, the plan together and see if everybody's on the, the whole page before we keep delving it down, it, it shouldn't be this complicated, I agree. But it, it, it is, and it's, if people are gonna question it, and so we need to be, all be clear about how it's gonna work, so that. Actually, the people who are gonna be selling these permits know what to do, so. All right, cool, yes, Dan.
I think we should publish it before April first, because people leave. So the sooner we can get this signed, we'll put it in the paper and on the web. Make it easier, just that people definitely, we made it to Mount Close.
I would like to try to get this off our, uh, unfinished business, uh, at the next meeting, please, okay, Sarah.
My concern is just. Our dump, our transfer station attendant explaining to somebody in December that they're buying a sticker for more money than they paid last year and they're getting it for six months. Having a script for him to follow that he can explain. Because I think that's gonna. Getting, con- people who will be confrontational about that will make him very uncomfortable.
Yeah.
And I don't know that he will handle that very well.
Yeah.
Okay, good, good comment. Are we done with this, have we beat it tonight?
Well, we're done with it for now.
Yeah, I know. All right, we're gonna move on to the. New business review and approve revisions to the delinquent tax policy. And Marco has made some changes based on, it looks like on, on the law, some of it.
Correct, we, we should have in there that, um. Letting people know that they have the rights to the seeking abatement, um, we cleaned up some of, there was some clunky language, Sarah helped me clean it up a little bit, uh, we changed the. It reflects now the due dates, September and February, we still have the old August due date. On there, so, um, those are the, the main substantive changes.
What did people say?
Right, I think it's.
All right, okay.
It clarifies.
Clarifies, I don't. Think it's gonna change much for the delinquency.
No, but it is also, it, it, we made it. But we updated it.
And we have, we've had that abatement language on all our regular notices that allow already, which is now a consistent cost.
All right, so does somebody wanna make a motion on this?
I make a motion that we accept and sign the. Document, uh, summary of delinquent tax collectors' policies and duties.
Second. No comment?
Oh.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Now we're gonna need to go into economic development, we have. The Flower Barrel Program bid responses. And Shannon, you taking this?
Yes. Sorry, um. Was there not something before this, though?
Uh, no, that was, we, we deferred that to next meeting.
Sorry, I, I'm glad I checked. Um, yes, so, uh, we ran a request for proposals or bids, uh, for February, and we did receive just one bid. Um, from the Boyd Farm, which is our current provider, um. So we last signed in April twenty twenty-one, uh, for three-year contract, um, so this would be signing for. Twenty twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven, um. Similar terms is before we make one large payment in April and the rest is split up, uh, evenly over six months. And, um, the only thing that's a little bit different is, uh, Janet's been keeping a spreadsheet of barrel locations. Um, I'll be going through that with her and then confirming with the business owners. Of where all of those are now to make sure they should stay there, um, and checking in with any new people, um, that are currently in business to see if we need to add anything, um. But I think that's it, um. Yes, sorry, um, I don't know if there's any questions or. Um, anything else I missed?
So, um, this year's barrel program was twenty-three thousand, three hundred fifty-two dollars and twenty-seven cents.
Yes.
And twenty-twenty-fives proposed from Boyd is thirty thousand, two hundred eighty-two dollars and thirty-one cents.
Yes.
So, um, obviously, and then each year has a five percent escalator in it, correct?
Yes. It does, so I know it's a large, it's over a twenty-nine percent increase from twenty-four to twenty-five. Um, but if we look back, um, when it was signed in April of twenty twenty-one, I think it was really. Uh, undervalued, um, and the increases between each year were in some cases less than two percent. Um, so I think, uh, we all know how much pricing has changed from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-five. Um, I know it's significant, but I also know, uh, we've also. Gotten a lot of extra barrels along the way, um, things that have changed a little bit, and she's always been willing to work with us on that, so. Um, I'm sure, I'm sure a lot of that is true to that, but it is, uh, the next three years, it is a straight five percent increase. Um, so when we did this year's budget, I did expect a large jump, um, I budgeted thirty thousand and I was pretty close, um, so. It's two hundred and eighty-two dollars and thirty-one cents over what's in our current budget.
And then the other thing, uh, just, uh, as we're talking about this, I didn't realize we'd had theft of plants. Um, until it was in, in this. You know, and then she's thinking of putting a, a bear cam out there to see who's taking it, because she, she seems to think it's the same per- people.
And I think she's, it's, it's been the same locations, um, and I think she's noticed, um, that over the years, so. Uh, I know it definitely happens, um, it's crazy to think that that's a thing, but, um. It happens, so, um, they do go out and replace when that happens, um. I think, um, I know we.
They're gonna charge us this year.
Yeah, well, and technically they always have had to, um, they just didn't always do that. Um, so I think things are just a little bit. Clear now in this, uh, bid for what they'll be doing.
Uh, those are on Handle Road Bridge, I mean, no, on the Tammy Road Bridge, and they handle roads sign, like, just, just that one. Yeah, first time I heard that they're taking the plants of the.
The plants, the plants.
They're just taking the.
And certain colors of plants, it's, it's in here, it's in the proposal. And it's the same locations.
Just one little bit of.
You get some camera. You gotta, you gotta be looking, you'll be watching. Yeah, put some overtime in there.
I'd put up a. Absolutely.
Okay.
And advertise that we gave him, it's going on.
So does somebody wanna make a motion, or is there any other discussion?
I make a motion that we approve the, uh, submission from Boyd Family Farm for the Flower Barrel Program, uh. Billing at twenty twenty-five, thirty thousand, two hundred eighty-two dollars, thirty-one cents, twenty twenty-six. Thirty-one thousand, seven hundred ninety-six dollars, forty-three cents. In twenty twenty-seven, thirty-three thousand, three hundred eighty-six dollars, twenty-five cents, with the payment schedule included in the document.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Uh, does it say how many barrels we're getting for this?
Hundred and eleven.
Okay, thank you.
Um, you also, uh, authorize me to sign the document? We've done that.
I am in my motion to state that, um, to approve Shannon Weir to sign the contract.
Second, you go ahead.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you.
Check those flower beads.
So up until May. We can, if somebody, if a new business opens in late April or early May, we can offer them another barrel.
Yes.
If they go further than that, they won't have the plantings large or robust enough.
I, I can ask what the cost would be, um, but I think it's fair to say if a business opens after they've been planted, um, we can check on it, but it's. It's a lot harder than if, um, after we've already decided those locations, um, before we schedule that planting.
Great. Now I need a motion to go onto the Board of Liquor Control, thank you Economic Development Department.
Thank you. A motion to go into Board of Liquor Control.
All in favor?
Aye. Uh, make a motion that we approve the liquor life first and third class license for One Mountain Park Plaza LLC DBA One Mountain, formerly known as Dots of Dover. Mike.
You wanna do the other one too?
And the first.
Oh, it's an outside, yeah.
A first, third, and outside consumption permit for KPLC Inc., DBA Westover Inn. He's nodding.
Second. Oh, wait, wait, do you wanna, we can do these and then do that, tho- those two?
Yes, but I have, um, neither, we've only had, um. We've only received payment from One Mountain Park Plaza.
Okay.
Um, they both have been contacted because we need fire inspection reports and training certificates for both, so.
Subject to all required documents and payments.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now jumping back to the. The outside, yeah, special event things. Yes.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, absolutely, we want to.
They, they didn't come from, did it come from, from the actual vendors?
No, they come from the vendors.
Small seller, you know, they're common.
I, I would presume so, um, it says. A table is in the vendor area in the outdoor courtyard.
So.
Our information.
Can you list the. So, alright, can you list the um, the vendors that are, I mean, that I've applied?
Brat Hard Seltzer Company, Cold Spring Spirits, and. You know, this stands for C H C M L L C.
So Mike, were you aware of this event?
No, did anyone find what?
It's a specialty food day.
Not on their website. Yeah, it's on their events too.
You search Mount Snow, March fifteenth, it comes up.
It is not on their website.
Yeah, honestly, I don't.
So you, how did you find?
I, I put in Mount Snow, March fifteenth, twenty twenty five.
And that came up?
On March fifteenth.
Did it come out of Mount Snow's website?
It says AI overview.
So I'm guessing there may be some more of these permits that somebody else.
Yes.
Is gonna, but it seems um, like we need to get. Mount Snow trained on how this has to work uh, with their vendors. Uh, I mean, we start getting wine and harvest stuff like in May and June, so uh, this is kind of. Not the normal way we would like to have to do this, obviously.
Right, and I don't, to be honest, I don't know why Mount Snow's liquor license doesn't cover anything on their property. Like I don't show why this has to be separate.
Because there's the vendors selling it themselves, I'm guessing.
I guess.
Like wine and harvest, everything is, is an individual sale.
Right.
Um, so.
So if you want to approve these or give us permission again to approve whatever comes in.
Hmm.
You know, in the next few days.
Patrick. So I'm, I'm just looking, there's a Skivermont website, which is the link.
That's what I thought.
And it looks like there's a bunch of vendors, I don't know, quick, quick and dirty call it twenty, and it's a rolling. Tour of specialty food days in a bunch of different mountains. It happens in Atlanta, it lands at Mount Snow on this day. So that could be why, and it says here it's eleven AM to three PM inside the main courtyard, whatever that is.
Yes, specifically, yeah, so this is, this is something that Vermontification does.
Right.
So, you know, Vermont, it's a Vermont themed event that's at Mount Snow, but it's not even on, it's not even on Mount Snow.
Who's their food and beverage director now? Anybody know? Yeah.
I can get it. Brian or.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Um, I think a phone call to him would be useful if we could do that. I don't. I just don't like how this is happening and that you guys are gonna keep getting these things.
You've got twenty vendors listed, obviously there's gonna be a whole bunch more coming in at the last minute. Know to submit it.
So I'd be.
What do you think, Shannon?
Okay, so. I guess maybe we should chat with Mount Snow first and see.
I mean, we could put this, can't we? It's not one, I mean, it's.
No, but in the past.
We could just.
Given us.
Yes.
To approve these, because they do tend to come in, you know, not within the meeting guidelines, so.
So we're just, we, do we have to vote to say they're authorized or we've already voted to let them and we're just gonna say it extends to these?
To these.
They're, Mike, signing off on anything.
I don't know them about it, but I'm finally at this point.
But I think that we should reach out to Mount Snow, considering the timeline of this.
Yes.
Uh, that they, they've even given us the heads up that this was coming and that you would be seeing this. I, I would, I feel more comfortable with that. Alright, so do we wanna make a motion to allow?
Haven't we already?
No, that was just for these.
No, I mean, we made.
No, in the past, we've said.
They have permission. So that's why I was asking, do we need to give them express permission this time or?
I think we shouldn't.
Okay, so I make a motion that we authorize the town clerk and assistant town clerk to approve. Permits for the event at Mount Snow on March fifteenth.
Second.
And reach out.
And, and then. Once we go on officially, we're asking that somebody like John to Mount Snow and. Ask them for some alacrity.
Okay. All in favor?
Okay, well, it's a question. So is, is there any requirement associated with that that, you know, it has to comply with? Whatever other requirements we've established?
Well, I would, Jeanette would, or Andy would decline it if they didn't.
Okay.
So like.
Yeah.
They're not rubber stamped.
Okay, okay.
Alright, right.
And there's, with specialty event permits, there's no fee due to the town, it, it goes to liquor control.
Got it, okay. Okay. No, thank you.
Okay, so Patrick, do you wanna make a motion to come out of the Board of Liquor Control?
I will, so moved.
Second. All in favor? We have the consent agenda, uh, which are the minutes from February eighteenth and the minutes from February twenty fifth, which was pre-town meeting.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes. We were, the four of us were here for both of us, right? Make a motion that we approve the minutes of February eighteenth and February twenty fifth, twenty three.
Any corrections? Changes, these were a lot, lot of long minutes. Good job, Jeanette. All in favor? Now we have the pay warrant, the warrants.
I make a motion, we approve the warrants of March first for three hundred seventy three thousand, two hundred eighty dollars, eighty four cents.
Any questions?
Congratulate Marco.
All in favor? We have FYI Planning Commissions meeting March tenth, Monday, March tenth at six thirty PM. Trails and Rec Committee Tuesday, March eleventh, six thirty PM. Dog and Cat Clinic, March fifteenth, ten AM, Eastover Fire Department.
Okay.
And there's a Select War Decentials hybrid training on March twenty second, nine AM to two thirty PM. Uh, V L C T dot org. And is anybody else gonna go to the Wyndham County Select Board meeting at um. Bluebrook Fire Department on Wednesday? I am. It's twelve to one, you wanna, if you wanna look at our lean carpool.
Let me just double check.
In twelve to one thirty.
This is on the twelfth?
Yes.
Yes, I think I'm.
You have to register.
Okay.
Okay. It's Wednesday, the twelfth, at noon. Right. We can all go. Do we have any liaison reports? I hear nothing. Okay, so we are gonna have an executive session. So. Yes, we make a motion to go in a second session, seven twenty eight PM. All in favor? Thank you all for coming out.